Good evening and welcome, everybody. I would like to call the Monday, September 8th, 2025 Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, where which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Tracy, roll call please.
Of course. Commissioner Ingersoll?
Here.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Present.
Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Commissioner Cradoff?
Present.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Howe?
Here.
Chairperson Hunning?
Here.
Thank you for that. Thank you and welcome, everyone, joining in person and online this evening. Tonight's agenda consists of, number one, the minutes from the last meeting on August 11th. Items two, three, and four are the rezoning, Plan Development Concept Plan, and preliminary plat for West Gate Villas. Item five is the final plat for Hawes Estates. Six is the City Comprehensive Plan Discussion. And item seven for adjournment. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for August 11th, 2025 meeting.
So move.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
And a second, several seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for agenda items number two, three, and four. Rezoning RZ 0625-9623, Plan Development Concept Plan, PDC 0625-9624, and preliminary plat, PP 0625-9641, for West Gate Villas. This time, I'll ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Josh Newell.
The city would like to enter exhibits one through eight.
Thank you, Josh. At this time, I would ask applicants, staff, and anyone from the public that wants to speak about this project, please rise and be sworn in collectively. All right. I think Ms. Frye is getting ready to tell us about the project.
So Chantel Frye, 903 West Main Street, Blue Springs, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in before you this evening as a request to, for an approval to rezone the property located at the northeast corner of Northwest 19th Street and Northwest MOC Avenue from RCSO, which is the Regional Commercial Service Offices, to a PDR, a Plan Development Residential. The applicant is also requesting approval of a Plan Development Concept Plan along with the preliminary plat to allow the development of an independent senior living community of 55-plus and over consisting of an 11 of fourplex buildings, one duplex, for a total of 46 units, a community clubhouse, a gazebo gathering area, and open space located on 6.28 plus or minus acres. According to the 2014 comprehensive plan, this area is designated as corridor reinvestment area. These are areas currently developed along significant transportation corridors where specific site and building design must balance with the transportation functions. The general land uses are mixed-use employment, mixed-use service and entertainment dominant, high-density residential, and open space. The rezoning request is compatible with these designations and promotes reinvestment, supports economic opportunities, and encourages higher-density residential development in the proximity to the area of the commercial districts. Approval of the rezoning application would establish a presence for high-quality residential development and is consistent with the intent of the PDR zoning district. Denial of the rezoning application would maintain the current zoning and could delay future development and reinvestment in the site and the area. Staff finds this proposal in compliance with all review criteria of rezoning and is consistent with other adopted city policies. Based on the review criteria in the support findings, staff recommends approval of this rezoning request. The proposed land use is a multifamily housing for 55-plus and over independent senior living community that will consist of the 11 fourplex units per building and a duplex for the total of 46 units, as mentioned prior. The residential buildings will incorporate a combination of brick, stone, and vinyl siding to its design, and each unit will include an attached single-car garage with a decorative garage door to enhance the overall architecture and character of the site. There are two access points for this development that will be provided from Northwest South Outer Road and Northwest MOC Avenue. Internal streets to this development are proposed to be private, with the developer responsible for maintenance of all the internal streets and sidewalks. A traffic memo prepared by the professional engineer states that the anticipated traffic generated by this development will not warrant a traffic impact study. A preliminary stormwater management plan has been submitted that includes multiple detention basins and BMPs to control the runoff in water quality. A final stormwater management plan will be needed to be submitted with the final plan. The applicant has submitted a conceptual landscape plan. All final landscaping included in required plant units will be reviewed with the PD final plan, and the required 15% open space equates to 0.42 acres, which is met by this development. Development is proposed to be completed in a single phase with construction anticipated to begin fall of 2025 and will reach completion of 2026. And here are some of the renderings of the site. It looks like it's going to be a palette of blue and possibly off-white, but this would be the buildings of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 10, and 11, and then these are the other buildings that will be 6, 7, 8, and 9. Here are the rear elevations and side elevations. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning application, and staff recommends approval of the Plan Development Concept Plan with the four conditions listed in staff report, and staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat application with the six conditions listed in the staff report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Step, ma'am, the majority of the surrounding area, is that residential or commercial?
There's a little bit of both. I'm gonna bring back the zoning map here. So to the south, we have the SF7, and then you have the regional, or the estates, residential estates here, and then you have the general business and the RC to the north, and then also two-family off to the east here, along with single-family. So it's kind of a little bit of mix of both and would be compliant in that.
Is there been no concern about having a road coming out to South Outer Road? I mean, that's already a pretty dangerous little stretch of land there. Having an additional road, people stopping, pulling out in front of other people, I feel like we're just asking for more problems.
There has not been any mention of it, but we do have our engineer here for the meeting that could probably discuss that.
I have a question. The green area on the map that you mentioned that was zoned?
Residential estate.
What is that classification? What is that? Is that for residences or?
Yeah, this map's actually incorrect. That was rezoned to be part of the?
School district.
School district church. So there used to be the Harvest Baptist Church on that property, which has been torn down and is now incorporated into the Blue Springs High School development.
Okay. So technically, what is that zone now?
Plan, I believe it's SF7.
I was gonna say SF7.
With a PD over it.
Okay.
And Toby Williams, who's our acting city engineer right now, can answer the question about the access onto South Outer Road.
Hello? Okay. Yes, we did take a look at that for site triangles, just to make sure that it was compliant, and we'll also have the site triangle designed during the design phase of the project to ensure that there is adequate distance for stopping and site triangles for oncoming traffic both directions and turning out.
I don't, I don't think it's a smart move to have that on South Outer Road, but that's my own.
Any other questions for staff from up here?
Could you reiterate what you mentioned about the parking situation and who again is responsible for the streets in Cywalla?
Yeah, so the parking situation, each of the residents will have a single-car garage along with, there's parking in the site. Let me pull that up. So each unit, like I said, will have parking, and then there's parking that's also driveway access to those units, and then the developer will be responsible for the maintenance of the roads because they are gonna be private, and they'll be responsible for the sidewalks also internally.
Is there going to be like a system to keep people from using that as a cut-through or anything like that, like a gate or anything like that, or is that, are we too far, am I thinking too far forward for that? Because you say a private road, it's just one of those things like, does it have to be, obviously it doesn't have to be policed, but it has to be policed.
Yeah, the, the road will be private, but it will not be gated. The slight jog, as you can see on the access on the south, as it then meanders up through the site to the north up to South Outer Road, in and of itself will prevent cut-through traffic because people won't be able to see a direct line of sight through the development. So a little bit of history on this site is these, this lot was merged with the other lots, and there was always anticipated to be an access from this property onto South Outer Road.
Hi. Anybody else? If I remember correctly, and I'm pretty sure it was this project, I remember reading over the weekend, I was looking at this, that the requirement is one and a half parking spaces per unit or development?
Yes.
How, explain one and a half to me.
So one and a half would be the one-car garage that is provided and then the driveway.
Okay, okay.
And then there's also parking along the south side of the units here. There's all the parking there and parking at the clubhouse, so.
Okay. All right, well, if there's no more questions from us, we will move on to hearing from the applicant. Seeing none and hearing none, is the applicant here who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Brian Ron. 112 Egoridge Boulevard, Green Valley, for the developer. I do want to point out, there is a little bit of, well, for clarification, the four units on the south side, all right, those actually have off-street parking. The other units are the ones with the driveways and the garages. So, you know, when you saw the two different unit types, those south units, those are the ones that have the off-street parking. So this property has been available for a long time. George Ward developed, you know, a good portion of that area and has had these lots for sale, you know, going back, I think, as far as the 80s. There's been, you know, little interest in additional development in that area, you know, both from the commercial side and also these particular lots don't lend themselves well to the types of buildings that are in the area, so right across from this would be like Edward Jones and First American Title and those types of things. You know, those buildings, you know, with the slope that this site has and everything, it hasn't really worked out to continue that style of development. So as we looked at this project, you know, we were trying to figure out, you know, what would be appropriate here, and being a commercial and an employment area, you know, there's not been a lot of development that way, but we thought that this particular use would be an excellent compatible use for the area because although it doesn't generate employment right there, it generates through the residents, you know, employments for a lot of the existing services and businesses in the area. There are quite a few healthcare providers right in that area, and then just going to either the east or west, you have a lot of, you know, neighborhood services and restaurants and different things like that, that, again, this one doesn't provide the employment, but it provides the doors to get the people, you know, to support the businesses that are in that area. So as we went through it, you know, we looked at a lot of different, you know, designs for, you know, what the product would be, and we felt that the 55-plus was, you know, the most appropriate. We also felt, you know, on this particular site, that we were gonna try to stick to, you know, a fairly low density instead of going up and stuff like that. So, you know, we have the fourplexes and single duplex. The clubhouse there is, you know, that's a community gathering space. We would also do leasing out of there. You know, that space also, we designed it with a full foundation, so since these are on slabs, you know, this would give an opportunity, you know, for a full foundation there if necessary. The parking, you know, we looked at that as explained, you know, the cut-through, you know, the, since the street does not go straight through, you know, we felt that that jog and everything, it would actually be counterproductive for somebody to cut through there versus the, you know, street to the west, you know. So these are all, you know, very good questions because we've worked through those, and those are things that have came up as we were working through the design, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
How did the transportation corridor tie into your design purposes?
So when we were looking at this, you know, sometime back, you and I had a discussion about, you know, like even mass transit in the area and stuff like that. So we did look to see what was in the area. Right now, there's not, you know, any services available to it, you know, so we weren't able to incorporate any of those things. You know, as, as those services come online with, you know, depending on, you know, the timing of the development and everything, and future developments, we're definitely looking for those things, but so far, you know, I haven't found anything that I could pull in, but like I said, from our previous conversation, it was definitely something that I looked at.
Well, it's good you're looking ahead.
Yes, sir.
Definitely make service for our future elderly people who are about to retire. We got a lot of baby boomers out here that'll be looking for some homes, so.
Absolutely.
We've talked about homes for the elderly for a long time out here in Blue Springs. Hopefully, something that's gonna work out.
Appreciate it.
Chair, I have a question. You talked about the foundation of the clubhouse. Is that something you're gonna build a basement in for tornado purposes, or you're just saying, what are you saying there?
So, so yes, we are planning on putting a full foundation, a full basement, under the clubhouse. Now, I can't specifically say it is a, you know, FEMA-rated storm shelter because, you know, that's a different classification, but it will have a full basement with access to the residents, for the residents.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have one, one question. Just looking at this, on the south side, are you proposing a wall or is that a fence?
It is a wall. So as I mentioned earlier, this site has a lot of challenges to it, so, you know, there is going to be a retaining wall on the south and the west sides there, you know, which, you know, will, will make for a nice little backyard to those units, but, you know, it is gonna be necessary to have a wall.
How tall is that wall?
It varies. It ranges, you know, down to zero and up to over six feet.
Okay. If there's any, no more questions up here, we'll get to the audience. Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this project? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this project? The microphone is yours, sir. Have you been sworn in?
Yes.
Just state your name and address, please.
I'm Dr. Seraphini. I'm at 1509 MOC, which is just to the east of that MOC road entrance. These are some of my concerns. I've owned that building for five years.
Which building?
1509 MOC.
Okay.
As it stands now, it's, it's a quiet office park, and it's a goat, and anybody that spends any time there would tell you it's a ghost town outside of regular business hours. So, and there's, and because it's completely surrounded by businesses, there's no reason for anybody to be there outside of business hours unless they're working late like I do or they're up to no good, because there's, there's nothing to get to by going through there. And so therefore, my concern is that the more people you have there, the more traffic you're gonna have, more parking issues, trespassing, and possibly crime. Not necessarily people over 55, I hope not, but all this lowers existing property values, and I think it's interesting to note that much of, much of this office park was sold in the last five years by Mr. Ward. And I have nothing bad to say about Mr. Ward, but it's interesting that he's not, doesn't have as much skin in the game.
And for clarification purposes, you work from the offices on the other side of MOC, on that long strip where First American Title is?
I'm, no, I'm right next door.
Oh, you're right next door, okay.
Yeah. I'm, I'm butted up against that property.
On the east side, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this project?
I don't know if this is an opposition, but I do have a question.
Name and address, please.
1512 Northwest MOC.
And your name?
We are just on the south of his unit, just the south of that.
And what's your name?
Pardon me?
Your name?
Deborah Totten.
Thank you.
Okay. And my question is that it says it's a 55 and older, you know, and is that written in the bylaws of that community, or is it, because that's a big thing to us, because I would think that 55 and older would be a peaceful, quiet community, but you let in the younger or the young kids and stuff, like he was saying, running around at night, because it is very, very quiet there at night, so.
I'm not at liberty to answer that question, but the applicant will have one more opportunity to address that, and we'll have him answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Any other, anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to or favor of? All right. Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this public hearing. Anything else from staff?
Yeah, the 55 and older provisions would actually be part of the zoning of the, or the, because this is a independent senior living?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's independent senior living as a land use, which then triggers the parking requirement of one and a half spaces per unit, and as such, in our zoning code, in order to qualify as 50 or as independent senior living, it is 55 and older as part of the land use for that project.
Thank you. So another way to state that or answer the question that was proposed is the city will have rules in place and will have some authority to govern the age group of people going in in case there's a bunch of young people that go in?
To a certain extent, yes. The developer may have some additional input as to how they will handle that from a leasing standpoint and moving forward, in addition to that land use by staff, but should it, should staff receive a complaint that it is not being used as such, then the site would be underparked, so there would not be enough parking for just a standard apartment complex. So then the, they would be out of compliance with their zoning, with their, if this were to get approved, they'd be out of compliance with the zoning, the approved concept plans, the approved final plans, as such.
I have one more question about the on-street parking for the four fourplexes on the south side. If they were public streets, would off-street parking be allowed?
Off-street or on-street?
If it were public streets, would on-street parking be allowed, meaning no driveways?
That may be a misconception, because on the south, the buildings along the south side here?
Yeah, those four.
They all have parking off of the street here to the north of those buildings.
Yeah, it's all off-street.
It's all off-street parking.
I'll take that up with the applicant, because I thought I heard, heard you say that it was off-street, but we'll get there in a second.
Well, it is off-street. Let's consider it off-street.
Oh, I thought I heard him say on-street, so again, we'll, we'll clarify that. Anything else from staff?
No.
Anything else from, yes. How is?
Thank you again. So, yes, the southern units there, they are headed in off, off-street parking. So, you know, each one of those units has the spots, those little rectangles that you see there up along the road that are being cut by the sidewalk going across, those are off-street parking. So each one of those units would have that available, and, you know, we have enough there to, to meet the parking regulations for those units. We also have overflow parking there at the clubhouse, you know, when somebody does have visitors, that type of thing. As far as the requirements is the 55-plus, we would meet all requirements of the city. We would meet all requirements of equal housing, you know, that would, that, that apply there. The other thing that's nice about this particular community is we actually have onsite leasing, which, you know, we will have staff there that's going to be seeing what's happening in the community. It's not just, you know, you rent a, a unit and, you know, nobody comes around, you know, we actually have, you know, staff that's going to be there. So, you know, we'll be maintaining the community. You know, George Ward, he's, I believe, 95 years old now, and, yes, he is, he has sold some of those projects over there, but, you know, like this one here, you know, he's, he's involved. He's involved in making this happen. It's the last piece of, of a project that he's worked on for 50 years. So he is involved, but, you know, the project moving forward will be handled by, by the family, you know, going forward from here. So, you know, in addition to, you know, when we looked at this project, you know, we didn't have quite the, the ground to pull off what we were doing here, so, you know, we even bought the, the additional parcel to the north that's been sitting there undeveloped for a long period of time. So this really wraps up that entire area, and George is excited to, you know, finally have this project done. Thank you.
I guess I should have asked this when we were asking staff questions, but here's one more. My hesitation with this project that I've not been able to overcome is the fact that a new residential development is going to have egress and ingress and egress access to the outer road. It just, for me, since I saw my packet on Friday, it has seemed like a fish out of water since then. I've driven by a couple different days just to analyze it and look at it. I can't think of any other residential development, talking between Woods Chapa Road and Seven Highway, on, on either, on this side of the 70, that the residential development comes out. There's, there's so much commercial around it. So that's, my question is, was that considered and, not asking your opinion, but how do you evaluate that in, in the staff's procedures and so forth? Because I'm struggling with it.
Is it specifically the residential use?
The fact that there's a subdivision with commercial pretty much abutting everywhere.
Right. Certainly understand that. There is, this is the only residential along this corridor. It is not too dissimilar in staff when we reviewed this from the assisted living facility and apartments that we have over on the east side of Seven Highway along MOC Avenue with the Encore Development, I forget what it's called at the top of my head, but it's near the, it's west of the Field House. And so with that project and with this project, property had sat undeveloped for a number of years. This was originally, the four lots to the south of it, and the one lot that is directly abutting South Outer Road were anticipated to be office or some other type of development. The commercial aspect in between or that surrounds this is office. It's not retail, other than the car dealership just a little bit to the east, and so staff looked at this similar to the one over on the east. And so staff looked at this similar to the one over on the east side of Seven Highway as adding a multifamily project in an area to help support the surrounding businesses, the office use. It is adjacent, it, there is residential nearby, single-family homes to the south and some multifamily that is, you know, one off of the properties along Outer Road, so we did not have a big concern about introducing residential to this property. If it had been single-family homes, I think we would have. But especially given the independent senior living and the reduction in traffic and car trips that are likely to be generated from that, hence the reduced parking requirements for that land use, we did not have a concern on that. The traffic yields and counts that either the developers engineer could speak to or our city engineer could speak to for this land use and the trip generation is likely less than any of the surrounding commercial or office land uses. But I would need one of them to confirm that, or at least be equal to that or not significantly higher, and so given all of those factors, staff did not have any concerns from a land use perspective on this, and which is why we're recommending approval. The property that is directly adjacent, it's about the same size on the parcel map, if you could bring up the zoning map, please. And zoom in. So a portion of the property is zoned. That one, and zoom in.
What more, Zoom?
To the property along.
Which one?
Outer Road. That one.
Right here?
Yeah, so that property there was not originally part of the same plat, and so that property, if it were to be developed today, would have an access onto South Outer Road.
You're talking about the portion of the lot that abuts?
The portion that directly abuts, if that were not being rezoned and combined with the four properties of the south, it would have its own access onto South Outer Road, and so it would likely be an office or some other type of commercial use and the traffic generation of that could be even higher than independent senior living, and so with that kind of perspective on the project, staff did not see a concern with that. We did evaluate the project for cut-through traffic. Hence, the, the, the original design did have that and the developer worked with staff to redesign that to prevent that cut-through traffic. Even though it really wouldn't make a lot of sense because the nineteenth street exit, you know, there's more of a stop condition there and the, the light there to tell you when traffic is coming or not coming, so that's actually a safer intersection, but with the site triangles that, that Toby mentioned and the access onto South Outer Road was not deemed to be dangerous or not compatible with the existing accesses that are along South Outer Road.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mello, were there any other opposition letters or anything?
No, to my knowledge, we did not receive any opposition emails or letters or opposition phone calls.
And when you do get those, you do include those in the packet, correct?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Any discussion up here or questions up here before we get to it? I'll just repeat my hesitation is the buildings look good, the project looks good, but the location just, I just am struggling with it, so. Just for the record. If there's nothing else up here, I will close the public hearing, hearing, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Nothing. Public hearing is closed.
With that, would anybody like to make a motion?
Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve rezoning RC zero-six-two-five-nine-six-two-three Westgate Villas with the staff conditions.
Second. Motion is second. Tracy, can I get a roll call for this?
Right. Commissioner Pumpfree?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
No.
Chairperson Hennig?
No.
And that's passed with.
Order two.
Order two. At this time, I would ask for a motion on the planned development concept plan.
Just for the record, I.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Oh, yeah.
I'm so sorry, I don't know what happened.
We're gonna go back there twenty seconds.
Vice Chair Howe?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, five to two.
Let the record be known, Vice Chair Howe was, was a yes. Now, how about a motion for the planned development concept plan?
Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the PDC concept plan, PDC zero-six-two-five-nine-six-two-four Westgate Villas.
How about another second? And another second?
With the conditions.
With the conditions. Another roll call, please, Tracy.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Vice Chair Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
No.
Commissioner Pumpfree?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
No.
Five to two.
All right, passes again, five to two, moving on. That item will be recommended and heard by the city council at their next meeting, which is September seventeenth, right here in this room at six p.m. All are welcome. And the preliminary, there's one more. I would ask for a motion for the preliminary plat portion of this project.
Take it again?
Yes.
Preliminary plat, I move to approve the PP zero-six-two-five-nine-six-two-four Westgate Villas with the staff conditions.
A second?
Second. Thought you were waving at me.
Well, you, see if you wanted to continue. Let's roll call this, please.
Sure. Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
No.
Commissioner Pumpfree?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
No.
All right, as stated, that will be heard at the next city council meeting next week on September seventeenth. The last item on the agenda is a final plat, PF zero-seven-two-five-nine-six-four-three for Hawes Estates. At this time, I would ask for staff's representation, staff's presentation, Mr. Day.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for approval for a final plat for Hawes Estates. The subject site is located at two-seven-seven-one-one Southeast Wyatt Road and is approximately seventeen acres in size. The applicant Tri-County Water Authority is requesting approval of a final plat to subdivide the property into three lots. With Lot One consisting of approximately seven acres and will be developed into a major water infrastructure facility operated by Tri-County Water Authority. Lots Two and Three, each will be approximately five acres and are intended for a single-family residential use. Lot One will have a gated access off Southeast Wyatt Road with Lots Two and Three having individual driveways off of Shroud Road. A five-foot ADA compliant sidewalk will also be installed along Southeast Wyatt Road. Lots Two and Three will be served by private septic systems in compliance with Missouri DNR and Lot One does not require sanitary sewer. All existing structures on the site will be removed by Tri-County Water Authority by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Staff has reviewed the final plat for compliance with the UDC and is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat and requests no deviations. Staff recommends approval for the final plat with five conditions as listed in the staff report. And in conclusion, the final plat for Hawes Estates first plat meets the city's requirements and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and UDC.
All right. Any questions? And this is the same thing that came before us?
Yes.
Just a few months ago?
Okay.
Is applicant here?
John Overstreet, two-eight-four-zero-five East Blue Valley Road, Independence, Missouri, six-four-zero-five-eight.
It is what it is, right?
It is what it is. There's no changes from what we talked about previously. Two residential lots and I think we described what our plans are for the long-term for infrastructure in that area. Happy to answer any questions or discussions about that.
Any questions?
So this is kind of needed to support?
Very much so. Yes, it's kind of twofold. Immediately, we plan to build about a forty-by-sixty structure that will eventually house a pump station. The first thing it will do is it will serve as the facility, facilities to interconnect Tri-County's water system, the city of Blue Springs' water system and District Thirteen, so that in the event of an outage or you're getting ready to take your takeout of service on ADP for, for painting, that'll be an extended process. We'll be able to use our facilities to help subsidize the water demands in Blue Springs. In the future, that will work the up, the other direction for Tri-County's or, or District Thirteen's facilities. With the anticipated growth in that area, District Thirteen's gonna need more water and that's what these facilities will eventually provide.
Cool. Any, no questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else up here? Time for a motion?
Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve final plat PF zero-seven-two-five-nine-six-four-three for Hawes, Hawes Estates.
Got a motion, how about a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like unanimous to me. All right, moving on to item number seven, comprehensive plan discussion.
Yeah, so just wanted to give you all a heads up that later this week, early next week, the city will be issuing the request for proposals for consultants to assist the city with our comprehensive plan update. We hope to have that open for about sixty days and then have a decision made on a consultant by the end of the year. Through that RFP process and what is written in the current RFP is that this is going to be a large effort to undertake the entire comprehensive plan for the city. Per state law, the comprehensive plans are the purview and approved by planning commissions throughout the state. And so the planning commission will have an active role in this and that is written into our request for proposals is to have not only engagement with the planning commission, but with the city council, with community stakeholders, with residents and businesses, and to do a large community outreach to help really get the voice of where the city wants to take the comprehensive plan based upon the strategic plan that was just approved by the city council. And a lot of those goals in that strategic plan will be directly carried over and then implemented through the comprehensive plan. Looking at future land uses, the integration of housing and commercial, retail, amenities, all of the things that go into not just a future land use plan, but help then drive the future transportation models, our need for capital improvement projects relates to the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, so the comprehensive, comprehensive plan is our main guiding document for the future growth of the city. Based upon the goals of the strategic plan from city council, so just wanted to make you aware of that, that you, that that is coming and that is going to kick off this year. Staff will begin doing a lot of research, demographic research, things of that nature in the interim, so that we can hit the ground running when we have a site or a consultant selected. And the process will really kick off after the beginning of the, of twenty-twenty-six.
You have a consultation group that you're already involved in?
No, that's the, that's the goal of the request for proposals is to solicit proposals from consultant groups to work with the city. So, there will be opportunities for the entire planning commission to participate. There will, we haven't had it all ironed out yet because it'll be largely dependent upon the responses we get back from those consultants. But we have asked for a robust community engagement, robust stakeholder engagement and some unique and innovative ways to get that input, so we're not going to rely on tried and true practices necessarily as our only means for soliciting that input. We're looking to see what other communities throughout the country have been doing over the past few years. A lot of cities throughout, cities, counties, towns throughout the country have been using the COVID funds, so the ARPA funds or other federal assistance programs that were made available to local jurisdictions have been updating their comprehensive plans since that time. And so there's been a lot of new methods for looking at comprehensive plans, new mindsets. And so we hope to take advantage of those to implement some strategies that may not have been used in Blue Springs before to, to really get that input. Our last downtown master plan process, we utilized a lot of newer techniques for getting inputs such as websites and QR codes and lots of stakeholder meetings. We really want, and I think we had a really good turnout, so we really want as much resident and business participation as possible, so that we can really hear from every corner of the city to determine, you know, to help guide what the city will look like for the next twenty years. So the comprehensive plan is not just kind of a guiding plan, but it's a, a long-range guiding plan. You know, it really looks to see what, what Blue Springs can be over the next twenty years and how to get there, so.
Since the, since the COVID money and the federal money's gone away, is there some type of funding that earmarked for a place like Blue Springs?
Not right now or not really anymore. The city has had this in its budget, its long-range budget and in our capital improvement program budgets for, for the last five years. And so it was originally going to just be a comprehensive plan update, but it's, it's now going to be a full rewrite of a comprehensive plan. So we've, we've been anticipating this for a number of years. We have the funding in place to do it and so we're kicking that off with the RFP here in the next week and then really kicking off the process after the first of the year.
Exciting times. It's, it's needed, so I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah. Yeah, we're excited as well.
Yeah. Any questions up here? I'll plan on being involved next year. Any other business? I've got a question, something I'd like to look into. The small sliders that we approved earlier this year. So I'm having a problem with, with parking and with coming and goings from there, so my issue is that when I go there just a couple of times and when I'm driving down Seven Highway, I see other people do the same thing. So if I'm headed south on Seven Highway and I have to basically, if I want to pull into small sliders from Seven Highway, I basically have to do a hundred-and-eighty-degree turn to get around to avoid the drive-through exiting and people either block traffic slowing down to make the turn because it's such a sharp turn. I think that there was a design, perhaps there could be a design flaw in the sense that it wasn't studied or calculated correctly because traffic's being held up sometimes when people are waiting to get in there. In addition, once you do make the hundred-and-eighty-degree turn, you've got people leaving that are not hugged to the right that allow these people in. So my point about bringing this up is, I'd also be curious about maybe another time for staff to look at it and see if something was missed, but even if it is all pursuant to the guidelines, it's continuing to happen all the time. Is there, and Councilman Kayler, I'll call on you on this, I believe that when there's situations like this, when we, well, let me back up, from a planning commissioner's perspective, you know, there's no formal training, we're not paid. We don't really learn how to do this. We go off of what we know and I believe in learning from our mistakes. Is there any process in place, and if not, maybe I could have lunch with Mr. Kayler and we could. we could talk about it, to where things that we missed up here, is there, is there any way that we can learn from those? Can we start a guide or a book? So, when, when we onboard, maybe you can sit down with staff for thirty minutes and say, this is what we're doing, but here, here's a couple of things that we missed, so look out for these things. My comment is very generalized in the sense of, I don't expect an immediate answer, but how can we start learning from these things? I'd like to, I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Maybe some kind of system put into place.
Yeah.
You good for lunch this week? I'll call you tomorrow. Awesome.
Yeah, I absolutely, and staff is more than happy to arrange any trainings for the planning commission. Um, we've had a couple of slow meetings in the, in the past six months or no meetings because we didn't have an agenda and those make the perfect opportunities for trainings. Um, the last time that we brought this up, uh, with the idea of potential topics for trainings and looking into trainings, um, it was, I, I believe there was a discussion amongst the planning commissioners that there was no training wanted at that time, uh, but that is obviously something that we can continue to seek feedback on, uh, in particular, I know of one training that I've watched, which was, um, site plan review for planning commissioners, available, uh, through, uh, I believe it was PlanNet is in, which is a, an online resource for the planning community. So, if there are certain topics that the commissioners would like to learn about, such as this and how to review site plans and what goes into that process, uh, or if there's other ones concerning, uh, you know, rezoning criteria or other, you know, topics related to those types of things, we can find those and we can present those. And, uh, any other, and kind of, you know, when we find things that maybe don't work, um, that could be an impetus for a code change in, in the future, um, things that just don't, you know, they may meet the code today, but the practical application doesn't produce the desired result, that's when we start looking at code amendments, uh, and really feedback like that is one of the reasons or one of the, the, you know, things that prompt us to start looking at that. Uh, and so, that kind of feedback is, is very welcome at any point and any discussions that we can have or through a training or just a, a conversation here at planning commission, we could, you know, set aside fifteen, twenty minutes, half hour, hour at the end of a planning commission or make it a regular part of an agenda if you, if the commission so chooses, we, we're open to all of that.
I have a few additional thoughts, but I'll just email you tomorrow because they don't really need to be voiced here publicly.
Okay.
Not that it's, it could, but.
Yeah.
It's just, we could go on and on like this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, any comments about any of that up here?
Thanks for reading it.
Great idea.
For bringing it up.
Well, I think there could be a manual from like, from the beginning, what things mean and walk right through that.
I agree, and that resonated with me. And it resonated with me because, um, I agree in the sense that, so I've heard, Mike, you say a couple of times throughout being involved here that, you know, if there's any training that is needed, you know, then let us know. Um, I, I would like to add to that, that just because any of us or even councilmen are coming to you saying, what does this mean, it doesn't mean that they, they don't need to know more. So, if nobody's saying they want to learn about this or this, uh, one of my recommendations would be if staff put together six, eight, ten, whatever, just little fifteen-minute training clips, not videos, but just peep bits, um, just randomly add it to the end of short meetings next year. That does need to be on a long meeting because that, you, you, we won't be listening as much perhaps, but, um, anyway, that's just a thought that I had about all this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Only other thing that I'd like to comment and ask for further help is with, with the tall grass and stuff, the flex spaces is, is six to eight feet tall.
I haven't seen, uh, Adams Dairy at, uh, Double A.
I haven't.
Going south. They finally cut it down a little, it's only down to about eight inches now, but it's overtaken the whole area. But that's.
Yeah.
I, I think Blue Springs needs to get a coach person that actually drives around though, so it's not one that just haves. That's here to that.
Um, what the other, one of the other sites, again, because it's so visible, is, is the Montra Building, which is torn down. Um, so, one thought that I had while I see these is, and I don't know the details behind it, but when people come to us for development, um, I know this is way beyond our pay grade, the city council would have to do it, but why not get a thousand-dollar bond or deposit from them before the project starts that if they don't cut the grass, then they don't get it back or the city can use that to, to do it? My point is that there is longstanding six-foot-plus tall grass that has been in place for months and months and months throughout this year. And it's disappointing to me and I would love to, um, help in any way to create systems to, to make our city more beautiful. That's my comment.
So, the city, we don't hold private companies accountable. That's the biggest problem.
Repeat that, please.
And as a whole, we don't, we don't hold private businesses accountable and, and that's why you see all these crazy things. I mean, it's difficult, we're not the only city.
Right.
I'm not calling Blue Springs out, I'm just saying.
All right. That's the rest of all I have tonight. You want to hear more? I got more. I'm just kidding. Anybody else?
No more. That's okay.
All right, having, uh, heard nothing else, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for attending or watching. You don't want to find out that?
We have suspended the meeting.
You don't want to find that?